Start. This process. Alright, so did you guys have a county commissioner meeting today or was that last week?
No, we had one last week. Our next commissioner meeting would be this this coming Tuesday.
Okay, perfect. So my first question for you, I've had a little trouble getting to the bottom of the guidelines that that kind of you guys work in. So as county commissioner, is there is there a place where I can go to like see? Would it be like county law that that dictates what you guys' responsibilities are? Or where would I find that?
So yeah, so actually, and that's a great, that's a great question, but you can see that if you go to the state of Michigan website. Okay, and you dig into the state law, they'll actually have all of the in that in the laws there. I think you can get there through the House of Representatives or the Senate website, either one, and you would be able to see the the rules that govern county government, okay, from the state level.
Perfect. So yeah, I'll have to look into that. Um, so I've I've talked with other county commissioners about this. Um, so I've just got this this question for you, just so I get my computer's popping random stuff. So I with the the responsibility of hiring and running the different county departments, say like the Ottawa County Health Department. Uh, would you agree with the other county commissioner saying that you guys did not have the authority to uh, instate a new director of the Ottawa County Health Department?
Uh, that's correct. That's one hundred percent correct. And there and there's a reason for that, okay? Our our government in Lansing years ago, and I'm and Thomas, I don't know the year, but I I'm gonna think it was in the law was like nineteen fifty seven or something like that, okay? And they set it up so that it could not become political, okay? They wanted, they had the foresight to see that how health department should be ruled and regulated by the state health codes, okay? And and I'll give you an example. If you think of, let's say, you're and I have a favorite restaurant, okay? And the health department shuts down this restaurant, and you call me up as the commissioner and you say, hey, they shouldn't be closed, okay? I mean, you need to go in and get involved. I've been there, I've seen it. I've tasted the food, I haven't gotten sick, okay? I've done all this, and you know, you need to change that. I I don't have the power to do that. I can't override a shutdown of a of a restaurant. Same thing like if it was a um, a septic tank inspection. You wanted to build a house, okay? And you, I guarantee you, everything is great, you would say. I I can't overrule that. Those are health department things, and there's a reason for that. We don't want political elected people, okay? That would then therefore be able to put politics into a deciding factor. The health department's decisions are should and and are based on the health and well-being of the citizens of the county. I'm not a doctor. I'm not an epidemiologist. I'll be honest, in the beginning, I didn't like, I still don't like mask orders, okay? I just don't personally don't think mask orders are something that are, that should be my choice, okay? However, I also, like I said, I'm not a doctor and I'm not an epidemiologist, okay? And I have to defer to those experts because, and I and I heard this, I heard this on, and I'm gonna one more analogy, this is, this was excellent. I heard this yesterday. I was listening to Dave Moody, who's a NASCAR announcer, okay, and he was doing a radio show. And he said, he said on his radio show, he's a hundred percent as a crew chief. He has never had a failure. He's a hundred percent as a crew chief. And I'm like, whoa, you've never been a crew chief in your life. What do you mean? And he said, if you ask me on Tuesday, I'm a hundred percent of all my decisions would be correct based on Sunday's race. And it's like, yeah, you know, I guess that's right, because I'd be a hundred percent in football as a as a as a coach. I I'd never lose a game if you allowed me to play the game on Sunday, but then coach on Tuesday. I mean, that's not, it's just, you know, so armchair quarterbacks, it's a, that's an easy way to 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 say, hey, it should be this way or it should be that way. But we have to rely on the experts. I really believe that.
Okay, so uh, I I guess that that kind of leads into uh, your opponent directly for this county commissioner race is Joe Moss and not. So I I know he he and you probably have some disagreements on how the county should be run at this point. And um, so what uh, what what roles did the the Ottawa County Board of Commissions play in like um, telling, you know, libertas school that they couldn't be functioning?
So um, and part of it, this is an ongoing case, so I can only comment to certain things. Okay, because it's still in court, because Libertas School sued Ottawa County. Even though that judge Halsing threw it out of court in Ottawa County, they're in appellate court now. Um, somewhere in Ohio or something like that, I think, I I'm not sure where it is, but you'd have to check with legal office and they could tell you what the status of that is, but um, but I I can tell you that the reasons for how, why Joe Moss was upset, when his kids went to Libertas School or go to Libertas School. They were ordered because they had cases, they had positive cases. They were told they had to wear a mask and follow all the all the other schools in Ottawa County, had to follow those rules. And they were no different. Um, they felt for religious reasons that they shouldn't have had to do that. We received, we rece- and I can, yes, we received calls from people within the school itself that were concerned that they weren't wearing that, because they never, in in the end of the day, the Libertas kids never wore masks, okay? Even though they were ordered to and closed and shut down, they never wore, they never made their kids wear masks. They never wore them. So, you know, I mean, that's kind of a, if you ask me, that's a little bit of a uh, preach it on Monday or preach it on Sunday one way, but let's obey it differently on Monday. Um, wasn't really obeying what the purpose of the law was, okay? And uh, so I I lost a lot of respect uh, out of that, you know, for that. I respected the fact that they wanted to make a choice, and I do respect that, that you would want to make a choice for your own children. But in this case, um, they were not following the law. And the law was from the state. The law was not from the Ottawa County Commissioners. There is no, you know, there's a sign up somewhere says different commissioners, and it will say, don't forget them, they masked our children. We never masked those kids, okay? The state health department said, this is what will happen. The county health department agreed and said, this is what will happen, and that's what happened.
Okay, so just a follow-up question that, um, I've I've actually talked with Greg DeYoung about this. He said, um, almost the the exact same thing. Do you know exactly what law it was, or what laws they there are on the books that that would say that the health department can make a an order like this?
Yes, so um, it's no different than, it's the same law would apply, for instance, if uh, you had children in school, let's say, and they have chickenpox. They can close down a school, close down a classroom, they can send everybody home, just like deal with lice, same type of thing. Health department can send the kids home, not allowed to go to school, okay? So the the law that pertains to COVID fell in those same categories. Remember, COVID is not a political disease. It doesn't care if you're a Republican or a Democrat, okay? COVID just affects everybody. Um, contrary to what some people may think, that it's, it's not a disease that affects a political party. And so that's, they use the same laws that they would use with chickenpox or with with any of the flu, you know, you've heard of schools being shut down because of flu, the same thing, okay? And it's under those laws, the health department can make those those regulations.
Okay, now, uh, just a a question that, um, now you may not be, well, I'm sure you're aware by now. Um, the Ottawa County GOP has censured six of the and this doesn't pertain really to COVID at all, but the county has censured six county commissioners. Uh, you are one of those. Yes, so can you speak, have you talked to the Ottawa County GOP and gotten clarification on that or?
Absolutely. And let me tell you, I'll give you, and by the way, there is a little bit of a connection to the COVID thing, and I'll tell you how that worked out. So, um, on Thursday, last week Thursday, uh, there was an executive committee meeting, and one of the topics on the committee meeting was to discuss whether or not elected officials in Ottawa County should be allowed to speak to democratic organizations and encourage them to vote in the Republican primary. And that was the basis for the discussion on Thursday night. There was a motion made Thursday night by an executive board member. His name is Adam Tuntis, and Adam Tuntis is the attorney for Libertas School lawsuit that's suing Ottawa County. Might be a little bit of a conflict of interest there. Now, the attorney is making a motion to censure the same commissioners that he's suing, okay? Um, but anyway, so that happened. It was only a resolution on Thursday night to notify everybody that they passed this resolution. They should, you shouldn't be doing this. By midday on Friday, I received an email that I was censured. I hadn't done anything. Done nothing. I haven't talked to anybody yet. I called Keith and Hollander, who's the interim chair for the Ottawa County GOP. I said, what's going on? He said, well, he said, you're being censured because uh, we see that you are going to talk on Wednesday, this coming, which is tomorrow, that you were gonna talk to a group called Vote for the Common Good. And if you research them on, and I'm repeating almost verbatim of how this conversation went. He says, if you research them on the Google, you will find that they are a Democrat organization who claims to be nonpartisan, and they're funded by a gentleman by the name of George Soros. I said to Keith Denhollander, I says, I don't even know who George Soros is, so I honestly did not know who he was until Keith told me his connection to the Vote for the Common Good and Ottawa Integrity, and apparently he funds money and this. And I had no idea. Don't know the guy. I don't, I don't know where he's from, don't know where he lives. I don't know nothing about him. Anyway, and I said, so why can't I go speak on Wednesday to a group that claims to be nonpartisan? Says it right on their website, they're nonpartisan. He said, well, you're not allowed to. And he said, that's why we censured you, because you were gonna go. I said, I hadn't gone yet, number one. He says, and Keith said his exact words, would you go speak at Planned Parenthood? I said, if they asked me to come and speak at Planned Parenthood, I would. They probably would ask me to leave fifteen seconds into my speech, because they probably wouldn't agree with my stance, because I'm against abortion, hundred percent, always have been, always will be. My personal opinion, right? That's my personal belief. So I said to Keith, send me there. Oh, no, well, maybe that was a bad analogy, he said. And I'm like, well, I have a right to talk to whoever I want to speak to. And I said, Keith, vote for common good. Called me on the phone, asked me to come and speak to issues affecting Ottawa County. They asked me, what, one of the things they asked me, that the questions are gonna ask, are what are, what are you feel, is some of the most important things affecting your district in Ottawa County? That's not a Republican or Democrat question. My answer to them was drinking water. That's the number one issue in my district is drinking water. I will talk to any group and organization in Ottawa County that wants to listen about how we are depleting our deep well, our deep water aquifer in the center of Ottawa County. And we need to change the way we do things and how we develop. We need to change. We need to get more city water, municipal water supply in, because we're going to run out. And it, and I said, I will talk to anybody. And I still, even after being censured, will talk to anybody, because that's my job. My job is to notify people, and my job is to dialogue with people about issues affecting Ottawa County. As a commissioner, it's Ottawa County issues that I need to talk about. And that's why I said, you can do whatever you're gonna censure or whatever. And I said, I'm going also to the Farm Bureau event on Thursday night. Oh, you can't go there, he said. There's there's Republicans and Democrats at that event. I said, you gotta be kidding me. I can't speak to people, I have to ask them what party I am? Heaven forbid, what if my wife was of a different party than I was? I wouldn't even be able to talk to my wife about, you know? I said, this is so ludicrous. It's it's absolutely crazy what they did. And so, in my opinion, the executive committee of the GOP has taken is in search, my my words that I would use is they are searching for an identity. They are made up of, you know, there's a reason why Rhett DeBoer resigned as as party chair. It wasn't because she was so busy, okay? She just got, I believe, she got tired of an organization constantly beating on her about very far-right issues, okay? That they want to get through, and it's different, you know, these issues affect all people in Ottawa County. All right, and everybody should have a say. It should not be allowed to have one, one group. And you know, and in this case, we have an election coming up now, okay, and we have impact candidates running for eight or nine seats on the board. If they were to win the slate, their far-right agenda would become the agenda of Ottawa County. All right, is that the right way to go? I don't know. I don't think so. I don't think so. There's no, you know, look at the resumes of of these people. There's no experience. They don't even list anything. I mean, when I send out my flyer, the people, I try to list like a business would, you know, if I was applying for a job, because I am applying for a job to the people. I'm saying, hire me as your commissioner. These are my qualifications. It's, I mean, the, my candidate that I'm running against says he's for liberty, he's for freedom. Okay, that's kind of an American thing. I guess if you're not for liberty and freedom in America, probably shouldn't be living in this country, because that's what we're founded on, right? So, I mean, that's not really a qualification. That's, I'm for liberty and freedom as well, okay? I mean, uh, but I list, these are the specific things that I have accomplished, what I am currently doing, and what I will continue to do.
Okay, so, um, so I, you said, uh, drinking water is your your top issue. Uh, do you have, uh, would you mind just real quick, like, um, two, three, four, and five, just laying them out for me real quick?
Sure. Um, number one and number two. My first one is drinking water, and then kind of going along with that is groundwater, okay, because we have to get rid of all of our surface water correctly and and we need to make sure that our surface water that we're getting rid of is is not, you know, polluting our lakes, rivers, and streams, because we have a tremendous resource where we live. We have Lake Michigan, we have all of our beautiful lakes and rivers. Why would we want to destroy that? So, I mean, that's, that's, and number two, um, I personally feel we need to get broadband, get in, this brought into Ottawa County. We need everyone to have equal access to broadband from, you know, up in Marne all the way down to to Holland and everywhere in between. Um, you know, if one thing that we learned during COVID, that we heard, or that I heard from school boards in district in my area, was that not every student had access to the internet. And in today's world, that needs, should not be, especially not in Ottawa County, which is the fastest-growing county in the state of Michigan, right? You know, we need to have broadband internet access for everyone. So these students, if they do learn from home, or work, people work from home, or whatever, you know, there's, it's it's important. So we, and the bonus to that is with the ARPA money, the American Recovery Act money, you know, we got a lot, we got a lot of money in Ottawa County. We were given fifty-seven million dollars from the federal government. It hasn't been decided that broadband is going to be one of the ARPA fund things, but it's on the list as one to be decided. And if I, if I can help that in any way, I want to see broadband brought into Ottawa County. Especially that we have a lot of money that we got to spend, it doesn't have to come out of taxpayers' dollars. And then the third one, um, you know, the other issue that we've got, and this is kind of a, we have a lot of deputies, detectives, and officers on the sheriff's department that are reaching retirement age. Okay, I mean, there's, there's gonna be a big turnover, and we need to make sure, uh, as commissioners, that we work hand-in-hand with the sheriff and help him in everything he needs, so that we can maintain a strong police force um, and get new hirees, because, you know, it used to be, it used to be if you could, you could apply for a spot in Ottawa County, and you may be one of a hundred applicants for that deputy job. Now, that same deputy job that we're dealing with, that we're trying to hire for or fill with Ottawa County, we're competing at levels against cities and other counties all over the state, that we used to be a desirable county to where you'd want to be. Maybe the pay was higher, the benefits were better, but everybody has rose up to the occasion, okay? And it's tight across the board. So we're in a tight market, and, uh, you know, and the sheriff's got some great ways he's done with the academy and you know, moving students, helping students through the academy financially, so that maybe then turn, they work for us after they come out of the academy, you know, for a time, kind of like the military does, right? You know, the military sends you to college. Uh, they ask you to, you know, if they're gonna be an officer, they may ask you for a commitment of six years in exchange for that. I think that's a great way. If we could do something like that with the sheriff's department, uh, and bringing in deputies onto the force that way, it's a great way. Because once, I believe, once people live and work in this county, they want to stay here, and that's evident by our county. Just look around. Go outside and do a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree look around, and you will agree. You know, it's it's one of the best in the state.
Yeah, that's why I live here.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, so it's one through three? If you haven't thought about four and five, you know, that's perfectly acceptable.
Not really haven't, you know, I mean, four is more of a nice thing, you know, we have over seven thousand acres of county parks. And, uh, you know, I think that's, that's just really, really cool. I mean, people can go out and use all the different types of parks that we have in the county, um, you know, and I would want to maintain that. And, you know, we've got opportunities in the future. I can't, I can't talk in detail on it, because some of the stuff is, you know, it's private stuff while you're negotiating and stuff like that. We've got some great opportunities in the future, uh, for even more parkland to add to it, if if we so could or wanted to, and we would do it without any taxpayer-dollar-funded purchases. We could do it all through grants. So that's the other beauty of it, so.
Okay, all right. Now, um, just, uh, so I've I've talked to a lot of people in Ottawa County and um, there, I mean, a lot of, a lot of people are very concerned about, uh, you know, things like government overreach. I know that's been a big one, that's gonna be, uh, we're, I mean, we'll see how the election turns out. But, uh, I think that's gonna be something that people are voting on, uh, this August, this November. Um, and then what's being taught in schools? I know you guys don't have a lot to do with that. But we do have, uh, you know, a lot of funding going to, and this has been one point that Ottawa Impact has brought up, is the the funding that we have going into, uh, you know, organizations that may lean left, maybe teaching uh, you know, things that we don't want our children to be learning, like critical race theory or implicit bias, um, gender identity things. Um, and I know for me, that's a, that's a a big issue, something that I've been, you know, talking to a lot of the candidates about. Um, is that something that's on your radar, or are you, I mean, uh, are you looking into like where we're funding organizations that may be, uh, teaching bad things to our kids, like, uh, I know one, this one lady that I've talked to said, uh, we've got the Momentum Center in Grand Haven, right? And they're teaching some wild things on race. Um, and they've, I've seen some documentation of that. Um, is that something that is like on your radar, or are you, are you, uh, willing to look into that um, funding-wise as we move forward in Ottawa County?
Sure. Um, yeah, great question. Um, you know, I'm gonna tie that into the DEI office, if I can, okay? Because I think it relates directly to that.
Yeah, it absolutely does.
I was talking to a reporter this morning, and, um, they had asked me a question about the DEI office and what my opinion was of the office. And I said, well, I said, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Let's just break that down. Who wouldn't be for equity, all right? I mean, you would think. And who wouldn't be for inclusion? And let's break that down a little further. That's not just saying, and I'm not, you know, we're not singling out that, um, e- equity and inclusion can be things like women treated fairly in the workplace, wages being paid fairly across the board in the workplace. Um, it could be things like, uh, handicapped people having access to you know, employment, or to buildings, or to whatever. These are all things. And then, and and yes, with the, part of that is also gonna be people of different races, creeds, genders, and sexual orientation. But what I'm not for is, I don't think there should be special treatments to particular groups, or this or that. The office's job is to teach how we can get along with each other. How do we live with one another? You're not gonna eradicate a race or eradicate a religion, okay? Um, it's wrong for you to say, well, we're gonna just be a Christian county, and we're not gonna let any uh, Jewish people or Muslims in the county. That would be totally, I mean, that's like ancient Crusader days or whatever, right? Um, that's not gonna happen. So we're all live together. We need to learn how to work together, how to live together and play together. And that's what, in my eyes, what the DEI office brings, okay, to the table. They help employers find good quality people that may be of different races, religions, or creeds, okay? Um, they find, uh, they can assist, and they, the, the DEI office does not give education advice to schools, okay? That's, that's a myth, all right? Um, call Robyn Afric, she will tell you straight out, they don't do that, okay? But their job is to make this a better place and and find ways to do that. Um, critical race theory, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know what CRT was really until about two years ago, when, uh, there was, uh, the movements, you started hearing more and more about it, okay? And then it was sounded like, you know, the commissioners were for critical, we had people come into the meetings thinking that we were in favor of teaching CRT, Critical Race Theory in schools. We have nothing that is totally not even on our radar or in our scope of what we do. So, um, those are, if if that was happening, that would be a school board issue. And that's why there's school boards, because if if the county commissioners were in charge, why would they need school boards? All right, so there's levels of government that responsible for different things. And, um, like we talked earlier about the health department, okay, and the separation between the two, there's a separation between education and the county commissioners, you know, and no different than the road commission. I don't have a say on roads either. Um, I get that one a lot, where people will call and say, I need my road fixed. I can connect the dots and connect you to the right person, but I have no say in getting your road fixed, so.
Yeah, so you you brought up the DEI office, and I have actually talked with Robyn Afric, um, very nice lady. Um, uh, so there, there are, so I know that the DEI office does do, um, implicit bias training. Is that correct? They do?
If you wanted as a company to have that come in and taught, they could help you and assist you with that or whatever.
Okay, so, so that's something that they kind of help facilitate?
Yeah, and my understanding of implicit bias, okay, is understanding how you got to where you are today and based on what race you may be, okay, and why you're being treated the way you're being treated, or you think you're being treated the way you're being treated. That has, you know, I mean, I don't see implicit bias as as being taught that a particular group of people needs special treatment, okay? That's sometimes how I think it's, um, thought of, but I don't see it that way, okay?
Okay, have you, have you participated in the implicit bias training at all? That they, that they recommend? Okay. Is that something that would be available to, uh, so I've, I've actually been interested in going through it and seeing what exactly is in it? Um, is that something that, um, would be available to any citizen that wanted to kind of see what we're, uh, training our businesses with?
You know, I, I think so. Um, I could find that out for you. I don't know that answer outright, you know? But I can find out, uh, if that's something I, you know, they they do offer different classes and stuff, you know, with different things, and that might be something that uh, and if not, it might be something Robin would be able to, uh, you know, look into putting together.
Okay, yeah, so I I actually do plan to to speak with her. Uh, again, we had a little miscommunication. Uh, last time, she didn't, didn't realize that I wanted to record, so we just sat down and had a conversation with a couple of uh, people that are associated with the office. Um, now, uh, do, so let's say hypothetically, um, the DEI office was associated with uh, an organization that pushes like a far-left agenda. Would that be something that would concern the commissioners and would they, like, how would you deal with something like that?
I would be concerned because I want to make sure that they're not promoting it, okay? And a particular agenda. All right? Um, so I would be concerned as to the level of involvement that they have. Now, they have to be involved in it because it's a group of people that require or that is asking, you know, whatever. So that, that's the office's job is to be plugged in to what, what is going on out in the community. Okay? So that part is, yes, they would have to be, um, but as far as um, yeah, promoting and no different what I want them to promote an active far-left agenda is I would want them to promote an active far-right agenda. Okay? I don't believe that's their mission or their job.
Okay. Now, I uh, I talked to a couple of other commissioners and I asked this question. And again, it's been a point of contention that's been brought up is uh, the, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Office. The claim is that they've been associated with uh, uh, GARE, um, the government uh, Government Accountability on Race and Equity. Uh, I think that's, that's the acronym and that they're associated with leftist organizations uh, heavily. And then, so I was told by a couple of county commissioners that um, we take, actually Matt Fenske told me that like we take resources from GARE, but we're not like heavily involved with them. And then I looked into the report, the twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty report. The twenty twenty-one report was not at its time. And it, it had listed as one of the uh, the office's agenda items to um, be active within GARE meetings at least once a month. Um, is that something that you were aware of or is that something that concerns you at all?
Um, no, one, I'm not aware of. Okay?
Okay.
Two, two, um, I'm not too concerned because I would expect a government office to require you to be involved in something if they were, okay? Um, it doesn't mean you have to agree with everything, right? It's kind of like, you know, if you look at um, you know, earlier we talked a little bit about abortion, okay? And with Title X, Title IX or Title X funding from the federal government, Ottawa County receives money from the federal government. Um, in exchange for those dollars that we receive, okay? We have to follow also the requirements that require us to give out specific information on, on adoption or abortion. Okay? And uh, you know, so the government, with, with government money comes rules and regulations, just like the ARPA money, right? Same thing. With government money, always is gonna come with a little, they want to know what's going on. So they probably want involvement because uh, they're not just gonna give, give you money. Uh, now, it doesn't mean you have to agree with it. You don't, you know, I mean, you don't have to follow it, but they're gonna want involvement from the government. So I'm assuming that's why it's there.
Okay. Now, one more question. So this is something that I've kind of wondered about is uh, so uh, we take funding, uh, as you just mentioned, from the federal government for our Health Department. And because of that, our Health Department is not able to um, either uh, promote abortion or adoption. Uh, they kind of have to stay neutral and give uh, information on both. Um, now, if, if the community as a whole was to want our Health Department to just promote adoption and discourage abortion, uh, would you be in favor of rejecting that money and then restructuring the Health Department to only promote abortion or only promote adoption and discourage abortion?
Problem is, is that money isn't just for that issue. That money goes to fund a lot of different things within the Health Department. To give up that money, okay, would be putting a lot of people at risk. Um, and I'm gonna give you, uh, so we did a little research on this, okay? And if I got my years and numbers correct, in the last five years, there were two people, two women that came to the Health Department asking about help as to what to do when they were, for an unwanted pregnancy.
Yeah.
Two. Okay? And then.
Yeah. So I'm actually just talking about like a hypothetical, like.
Yeah. Uh, hypothetically, it's, those are, that's tough ones to answer. Because height, you know, once you answer that with a hard yes or a hard no, the problem is, is that then leads into, opens up a whole Pandora's box of other things that no longer get funded. And then you're, now all of a sudden you're against this or that. So you really can't answer that question with a yes or a no. It's, that's not, that's not possible.
Okay. That's fair enough. Um, well, I think uh, that's about all I, all I had for you. Um, now you're in, uh, you're in, I'm trying to remember what uh,
District five.
County, District five. Okay. And that covers uh, what's, what towns?
So that covers uh, Blendon Township, City of Hudsonville.
Okay.
Gamestown Township, and then the eastern part, uh, eastern precinct of Zeeland Township.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Well, thank you again so much, uh, Mr. Maple Link for talking to me.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate it.
Like I said, I'll talk to anybody that wants to listen. And I don't have a problem talking, as you can tell. So.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and uh, um, so I just, it's, people need to be informed and need to, they need to just, and thank you for what you're doing, for letting the people know.
Yeah, absolutely. That's uh, that's what I'm trying, like, I, so I started doing this because I wasn't informed. I had no idea. So I figure if I go right to the, you know, get it right from the horse's mouth and uh, you know, I can record it and talk about it later and put, and this, this interview in full will be up on uh, my YouTube page. I'm not gonna cut anything from it. So anything, you know, it's available to anybody that wants to see it.
No problem. All right.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Excellent. Okay.